Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Merrimack School Board for July tenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Can we all start by please standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're going to open the meeting up with our public participation portion. If you'd like to speak tonight, we ask you to come sit at this microphone right over here. And please state your name and address. However, if you are a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name. So the mic is open for public participation. Seeing none. We will move on to recognitions.
We do not have any recognitions tonight. We look forward to starting up upon the commencement of the new school year.
Great. Then we will move on to informational updates and start with our superintendent update.
The summer programs that we have running have started in earnest. We have many that are currently in progress. A lot going on at the middle school, as you know, since that does have air conditioning. As Matt said, the Brentwood building is in the process of being razed. Roofing project, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, is beginning. And that was funded by the public. So we're grateful for all the town's support. Amy and I, hopefully next week, will be meeting with Mackenzie Murphy. As you know, Mackenzie is on the Budget Committee in town, but she is also the Admissions Coordinator for New Hampshire Community College, and we're looking to strengthen our partnership. And working with the High School Guidance Department also, certainly in strengthening the working relationship and opportunities, by that I mean opportunities for students. And last, I just want to thank you. This is the second year that you gave me a very supportive evaluation. And just know how much working in Merrimack means to me, working for all of you means to me. It's a privilege to work here, and I greatly, greatly have appreciated your support. So thank you again.
Questions? We will move on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening, everyone. Summer is a really busy time for administrators and teachers, parents, families alike. I just wanted to start off by saying that we've had some really great PD already hosted this summer. We had a four-day, the elementary course for Responsive Classroom was hosted here. And then we had a one-day training for a leadership seminar. So that was very well attended. Both of those courses were waitlisted, so we had a lot of interest in those. And then this week, we are a host district for OGAAP training, which is a math professional development for teachers in grades K through eight. So we have teachers from across the state that are coming. And we are using the middle school because of that air conditioning. So like Bill said, our summer programming, I've been out and about in the district. And E S Y, really, you know, as we get through the bus issues, those first couple of days and bus routes, lots of teachers on hand, a lot of staff on hand. And I just want to take a minute to thank all of the teachers and everyone that is giving their time to ensure that students are closing learning gaps over the summer months. We've had curriculum teams meeting. All of the core content areas have either scheduled times that they're already meeting or times this summer that they're meeting. So we'll continue to build out our guaranteed and viable curriculum in Eduplanet twenty-one. There's a lot of work happening to transition not just Merrimack, but the state from Performance Plus, which is their warehouse of sorts, to call it, for assessment data, to Performance Matters. And so we've had some initial meetings with Demonstrated Success, Power School, and then we just have a really great Merrimack team. And I just want to take a minute to thank Jason Pelletier, Luda.
Alanovitch.
Okay. Adam Goodman, Angela Maslanka, and Mark Maryfield, who are working to ensure that the process goes smoothly. It is a ton of work for them on the back end as they migrate all of that historical data from Performance Plus into Performance Matters. But long-term, we really hope that it will build transparency and that parents will have access to their students' assessment data anytime that they want or need it. And I just want to take a minute to say that I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of the new administrators and the directors who started in their roles as of July one, and the energy is just amazing. You know, Krigus started over at the middle school, Sarah Reinhardt in Student Services, and Harley and Kay at the high school have just really hit the ground running. I think earlier tonight, you, with your approval, will welcome Sarah Perata, who is just going to be a terrific addition to our team, and Kathleen Ortega. I just feel, like Bill said, it's just such a wonderful time to be in Merrimack. The potential and just everyone working together, the team, the fit, you know, it just seems like, I'm just really excited, you know, for the team that we're building and the folks that are coming together.
May I add to what you were doing also in terms of you convening the committee this morning for the teacher evaluation process? So we are developing a new teacher evaluation instrument. So, and that's extraordinarily important.
Yeah, there were a lot of really good conversations with the MTA. So we're trying to partner with them to see what's working, what are the pros and cons of our current plan? How can we improve the feedback that we're giving to teachers to make sure that it's relevant and helpful to them?
Questions? I'll say, as I have a household member who attended the Responsive Classroom training and raved about it and said how phenomenal it was in the trainer and the stuff she took away from it. She was thrilled. She wanted more of it. I said, "You can't because you're on summer break."
Next summer can. We'll bring the advanced course.
But she loved every minute of it.
I was curious. You said some of them were waitlisted. Are there plans to offer more to get that out to other people? Or is it on hold?
I think we're probably done for this summer, Naomi, just because it's a lot of planning. And I wrote, it's in the Title II grant, and so we'll look to next summer offering the Elementary Core Course again, which is the entry-level course, and then the Advanced Course, which is another four-day course. And then this fall, well, August thirtieth, we're offering the one-day training just for the Unified Arts Teachers, which is more specialized training, so PE, music, art. But we'll do our best to bring it here again, but you really have to get in early because their trainers are just phenomenal, and they go really quickly. So we got on board with them in January. So I'm hoping to do the same thing with our new allocation.
Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Thank you very much. As Bill mentioned, the J M U's roof is in progress. Right now, the materials are on their way. Teamcraft is our vendor. I mentioned we did three bids. They were low bid, underneath the budget by a smidge, which was good. And they're a really quality organization, so we're really happy about that they were the ones who received the bid. So that's a good thing. So this week, they'll be starting to receive the materials, and you'll see the safety staging around the corners of the buildings go up and everything like that. So that made some progress. And I think one of the most significant attractions in the town of Merrimack, by the amount of vehicular traffic going past my office, has to be the demolition of what we call affectionately, the Red House. It's been a lot of years. We purchased that for the land, as the board mentioned, back then. We did a study on it to see if it could be renovated into a central office, you know, for chance, and it was not really feasible. If it was renovated, it would cost more to renovate that building than it would have to build a brand-new, just because of the layout and the awkwardness of it and everything like that. So, you know, it proved out to be a training ground for the police station. Every so often, they brought the state police, they brought the DEA, they brought their nice German Shepherds, who I got to pat a few of them because I love German Shepherds. And so it did serve its purpose. But now DeFranzio Brothers out of Raymond, New Hampshire, they won the bid on the demo, and they are going to town on it. And it's flat as a pancake right now. Next coming up is going to be the foundation, so excellent. I couldn't have asked for more, you know? So that's about it.
Go ahead, Lori.
So Matt, how much did it cost us per year to keep the Brentwood building going?
It was around twelve grand a year.
Twelve grand a year, so that's a good savings.
So, yeah, I know. It's a good savings. You know, you have to remember, it was ten thousand square feet. So it was around twelve grand a year.
Well, thank you. That was very exciting. We've been talking about that for many years.
I know. I know. I can't believe it.
I think we should have like a standing ovation.
Yeah, I know.
And may I just say, the price for raising that building is extraordinarily low. I mean, we just, Matt and I continue to talk about the fact that in Massachusetts, I think that same job would have cost probably three hundred thousand dollars. And it's half that.
In fact, we had a meeting with the president of the company in my office, Tom and I. And we're looking at the proposal and the numbers and everything like that, and included the asbestos abatement too, because there was asbestos in the lower level of that building, which wasn't on the engineer's report before the board bought the building, by the way. Anyway, we found that out. We kind of figured. And we said, "Okay, I want to get this clear. You're talking about all of the building, right? From here to the back, the foundation, everything, yes." And then Tom looked at him again and said, "Okay, I want to be clear. You're talking about the entire building, including everything in there." And it was, "Yes." So, yeah, I'm very happy with the price. Yeah.
Awesome. Very exciting.
Yeah, and we'll be working to see what's going to become of that. I have some new set of plans from V H B that show a certain kind of configurations, and we have the older plans from Steve Keach. So at some point in time, I'm going to roll those in front of the Planning and Building Committee, roll them in front of the Town Senate Committee, and then bring them to the board and have a little presentation, kick it around and see what you guys like, what you don't like. And, you know, it'll be an ongoing discussion. Hopefully, we'll have something that we can do with that space. It's going to be functional for the next budget season we're going to be going into. So, thank you.
As in this upcoming or budget season?
The twenty-four twenty-five.
Alright, moving on to School Board update. I just have two things. We had a great time at the Merrimack Fourth of July Parade last week, despite the rain, joined by several members of the Budget Committee and the Planning and Building Committee. It was just really nice to get out and see everybody, and lots of positivity, lots of smiles, lots of waves, which was nice. And lots of candy throwing, of course, which was always good. So just kind of our way of saying thank you to the town of Merrimack. And it was, like I said, it was really great seeing everybody. And then I'll elaborate a little more when we get to the old business here in a second. We did have our goal-setting meeting on June twenty-second. It went really well, as it did last year. And so we have some updates on that when we get to it momentarily. And that's all I have for School Board update. So we will move on to Student Representative Update.
Alright, so this Saturday, July fifteenth, Class twenty-two-five is having a car wash fundraiser, and the theme is tropical. And if you'd like to support us, please do. And recently, I was talking to my other classmates or students that are either friends or not friends. We were wondering about open campus and some other things, like mostly open campus. I'd like to discuss further on it, if either tonight or another day, because we're quite curious about that. In addition, I kind of want to understand how we can push School Board, like, update students more instead of like not updating them. Sorry, let me rephrase that. So I find that students themselves, at least for me, I don't, I wasn't updated with the School Board. I didn't really like know what was going on in the School Board. And I want to find a way to push that out more so students are more updated and can further give their opinions in the School Board, more like students participating publicly. I think that's a good idea. Maybe touching into some social media, maybe understanding, I could try to help out with that. But if that's a possibility, I'd love for that to happen.
Yeah, go ahead, Jenna.
So I think my response to that is, my understanding maybe was that that sort of was happening. You know, that the School Board rep would take whatever was happening in the meetings and was reporting back. Because you're a representative from, is it student government? Is, like, how, so how do you become a School Board rep?
Well, I became School Board rep through Student Council.
Right. So I guess I was thinking, I think, and maybe I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that the School Board rep, you would come here, you'd hear what was happening, and then you would report back to the Student Council. This is what's going on at the School Board. Here are some things I think we might want to get involved in. So I think that's an opportunity for you to expand what, if that's not already happening, what the student rep is doing, because you can report back from the meetings what's going on and then encourage student involvement.
Right. Yeah, I'm with Jenna. I thought that's what was going on. I thought that's what the student rep was bringing this information back, so.
I mean, I am bringing like information to other students, of course, though I was just like thinking of a wider variety.
Well, and one thing that I will be talking about momentarily in our goal-setting meeting is that the communication plan for the district is a very large part of our new goal. So that is on the table. And then Lori, what were you going to say?
And so I just wanted to clarify that something like open campus, like that all comes through your high school principal. So we're, what this body is like a business meeting, and we set policy. So if, you know, Mr. Claire wanted to come and make a proposal on making any changes to the high school, but we wouldn't make a change to the high school, he makes the change to the high school. Because it's kind of like we stay in our own lane.
Right.
We try to.
So anyone who wants to get that topic started, I would arrange a meeting with Mr. Claire.
Yeah, and I would recommend strong grassroots, like get the conversation started at MHS and really, you know, provide, this is the benefits to something like this, this is how we feel about something like this. And the more information and data you have to present to Mr. Claire, the, I think, the better off you'll be.
Like just giving out the pros and cons and what could be with the open campus.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Well, I think if you're talking about more kind of topics that interest you guys as students, because this is a lot of business stuff, this is a lot of policy stuff, this is a lot of items that aren't necessarily exciting to students, right?
Open campus is exciting.
Now, open campus, now that's something to talk about. So it's all, it's all, having been sitting in this chair for twenty-three years now and having done this type of work for thirty, I can tell you, a lot of the board meetings aren't exactly, you know, really exciting. So if you're bringing forward topics that you bring through administration that are pertinent and kind of represent interests of the students, that'd build a better connection. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, that does make sense. I'll definitely.
You say that with surprise in your voice, though.
Right.
That it actually made sense.
It definitely makes sense.
Thank you.
I'll do that for next meeting.
Yeah, cool.
And just to get clarification, I may have missed it. Where is the car wash exactly?
Yeah, car wash is in the Burger King, near Rapid Refills Shaw's.
Awesome.
What's the date?
It is July fifteenth, Saturday.
Saturday? My car's filthy.
Come by. Thank you.
Alright, and we move on to old business. And as I was alluding, we had a really productive meeting on June twenty-second with the district administration and all the School Board members over at the middle school. We had our Primex representatives sort of mediating the meeting and focusing us and guiding us. We started the day with a full breakdown of where we are at with the goals we set last year. And it was mentioned at the School Board meeting prior to that, that we're in really good shape with our goals from last year, as in they are either being met, on the way to being met. And, yeah, just a lot of green marks on that spreadsheet. So again, huge thank you to our administration for seeing those through, and we're just in really good shapes. In such good shape that we felt it was time to add some new goals, and we did. So we, I think we came up, we ended up with three. We wanted to do a couple more, but I think time ran out. But we came up with three, and then we all kind of split up into groups to sort of focus on those. And Jenna and I and Lori Peters, oh, I forgot to mention, she's excused from this meeting. I didn't mention that at the beginning. Sorry. We sat down, and one of the main goals we talked about was communication and how we have a communication committee, but we're not really sure what the role is and what that looks like. And so we came up with sort of our vision of what that looks like. And then what were the two other goals? You were on the other one.
So ours was really on accountability, assessment and accountability. And we focused at all kids can learn at high levels. And so what are we going to do when someone gets there? How can we push those bright kids to keep going? And what are we going to do when we have a gap? And how are we going to fill the gap? So, you know, at certain levels, if some, like say, we talked a lot about fourth grade. If they're not there, how are we going to, you know, make sure that they have those skills? Because high school dropouts don't start in high school. They start in elementary and middle school. So it's really important that those skills are, they have those competencies, they have those skills, and they're proficient. So that's, that's what we've spent a lot of time on, how we're going to look at that.
So the other one was to do with facilities, specifically administrative facilities. And we set some pretty aggressive goals on figuring out what we're doing and then actually doing something with our current S A U office. And not only getting it done, but also, you know, how do we connect with the community and help them get on board with that and realize why this is really, it's a necessity at this point. The building that we are currently asking our administration to work in is terrible. It's unsafe. It's not a good building, and we need to do better by our district. We need to strive for better, and we have kind of a little space because we're going to be done with paying for the middle school, and so now it's a good time, and we're going to do it with a concrete plan. And so it's not going to be like, it's not going to be quick, but it's going to be methodical, and we're going to make sure, but we're going to actually see some action. Because we've been talking about this for a really long time and haven't yet seen any action, and it's time.
Yeah, that is a very good point, because with the middle school bond being paid off this year, you have eight hundred thousand dollars that's going to disappear off your debt schedule. So if you ever want to incur more to do that, now would be the time, which we said a number of years ago.
Yeah, Primex are partners, that Primex are going to put together a beautiful little, because a lot of ideas were thrown out and chicken scratch on sticky notes and things like that. And so one of the nice things about Primex is they make it real pretty and understandable and readable. So we're going to get that packet, I think, before the first meeting of the school year. And then that way, we can kind of present the language that we came up with. That was the gist of the three additional goals. So, and if I'm missing anything, please feel free to interject, but I think that's it. Any questions, comments, additional things that I missed? Cool. Moving on to new business, approval of Mesa Memorandum of Understanding for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
Well, the COVID pandemic had an extraordinary impact on labor markets in certain segments of the economy. And one of those greatly impacted was this profession. Not only the supply and demand for teachers, but the supply and demand for very important support staff who work extraordinarily hard every day with students, some directly with students in instructional roles, some working to keep our facilities clean and safe. We found that we were very uncompetitive in terms of our contract that represents the employees, our support staff employees. We began to realize that part of last year, and you were very supportive in supporting a memorandum of agreement that allowed for a retention incentive for employees and a bonus for anyone who essentially found a great qualified staff member that we ultimately employed. We're still in that situation where our contract is less than competitive. We know we need to address that in the upcoming collective bargaining process. Their contract will end at the end of this school year. And so we're looking forward, and I'm proposing to you, to continue the memorandum of agreement that we had in place for the last fiscal year for this new fiscal year. It's the same parameters, and I think it's a good faith effort and brings us more in line, not in line, but more closely in line in terms of competitiveness. But we do need to do a lot of work in the next collective bargaining process. So I'm going to recommend to you that we support the memorandum, excuse me, of agreement for this next school year.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the Merrimack School District and Merrimack Educational Support Staff Memorandum of Understanding.
I'll second. All those in favor? Passes four zero zero.
Thank you very much for your support. We all know how valuable each and every staff member is, and I think it builds goodwill, and we look forward to the collective bargaining process.
Great. Moving on to crossing guard discussion from Mr. Matt Chivanel.
Yeah, thank you. This is not the first time this topic has come up. This topic probably came up, oh, perhaps ten, fifteen years ago, when Keith Ickey was the town manager or Eileen Cabanel was the town manager, that the Merrimack PD didn't want to fund the crossing guards and thought that was a school function. Bill and I went over to have a meeting with Brian Leveque and Matt Talton, the chief and the deputy chief over at the Police Department, on another couple of issues, just kind of getting to know you kind of meeting. And Brian Leveque, the chief, asked us if we would be willing to pick up the crossing guards. They have one that's resigning at Thornton's Ferry. It will not be back next year, and they prefer to put the school crossing guards with the district. Now, I know this is a topic, a long time ago, the board did not care for that idea. I talked with Monica Pennant from Primex, New Hampshire, Primex, and she says normally that is kind of a town function. As far as the crossing guards, everybody knows the crossing guards out here on Babusick Lake Road, there's not really a lot of kids crossing. It's more like a traffic control kind of thing. It's more like a demolition traffic control kind of thing, with the buses coming in, kids coming out of O'Gara Drive, parents all over the place, J M U's, the backup there. You know, when you look at Thornton's Ferry, that is, they must have a hundred and forty parents dropping off at Thornton's Ferry. They back up almost Continental Boulevard or Castleton Court, or wherever you want to say. There are a few kids, you know, Ingham Road goes across. So there are a few kids that come from Ingham that would walk across that, but without a crossing guard, I mean, that's not a good situation. So we just wanted to convey to you that that was the request, have you kind of discuss it amongst yourselves and see if you do indeed think that that should be a school function. Now, those crossing guards have police powers. I'm not going to put Rich Desmond out there and have him, you know, pretend that he's still a police officer and stop people from doing what they shouldn't. Plus, I can't exactly, I don't even know who I would hire. You know, Brian mentioned perhaps somebody retired or something like that. I wouldn't want to be out there myself. I'm not nimble, you know, and I would not want to do that job. So I'll just kind of put that, I don't know, Billy, Bill, if you want to say anything? I just want to put that out there for your consideration.
Well, from my experience historically, crossing guards have been a function of the Police Department. At least they were in my former district. You know, we had some traffic control, a traffic control person at the high school in my former district, but that was funded by parking fees that we collected. And so for the most part, it was a municipal function.
You know, this is on a municipal road. This isn't on O'Gara Drive, which is our road. You know, we own it, and it's not on Lions Road. You know, this is, these are public, these are well heavily public traffic areas right now.
Right, Naomi.
So I have a daughter at Thornton's Ferry, and I have sat in that traffic line a lot. My experience, so my biggest concern would be that, where is the training for this coming from? Because this isn't some little podunk road where the crossing guard walks out with their stop sign and stops traffic so that the kid can get across the street. This is a thoroughfare. And you mentioned cars backed up almost to Continental. It's on both sides of the street. They're on both sides of the street, and the way that it happens now is the crossing guard is in the middle of the road.
And the way that it happens now is the crossing guard is in the middle of the road. The parents start getting there early before people can drop their, even drop their kids off. So you've got these massive lines of cars on, on the, on the shoulder, on both sides of the street. So you've got people who are planning to turn left into Thornton's Ferry on the shoulder, on the left side of the road. You've got cars going back and forth. And what the current crossing guard does is comes out and she says, okay, now everybody stop. And she, she, she's really directing traffic. Now it's your turn to go into Thornton's Ferry. Now you stop. Now the people going straight on Camp Sergeant Road can go, now you stop. Now you've got these people who are on the shoulder, on the left, turning in around the cars in the, in the left lane who are planning to go straight into Thornton's Ferry. And yes, there are some kids who cross, but my experience watching it is that the vast majority of them are there well ahead of the time and, and they all cross as a clump. Like she stops all the traffic and then the vast majority of them make one crossing. And it's a, it's a directing traffic position. And I would be really concerned about training and authority.
Training, liability.
And all of that kind of stuff.
Can I ask, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is it any different than Turkey Hill and Meeting House?
No, no.
It's worse.
How about, how about, how about if we pulled, how about if they pulled the crossing guard from Turkey House?
Oh, Bruce?
He does it in the afternoon already.
Really?
Yes, Bruce, Bruce, who does it on Turkey Hill and Meeting House. He does the afternoon traffic direction at Thornton's Ferry right now. And there's a different person in the morning.
Right.
Go ahead, Jenna.
So you hit the nail on the head when you said it's a traffic problem. I have the wonderful blessing of having kids in both Thornton's Ferry and the high school. And I get to do what you just said and the high school. So I see that traffic guard. And the, the crossing guard isn't actually helping and it's actually, it's a poor title. They're not actually helping anybody cross over here. Nobody's crossing. It's traffic control here. And it benefits the town because that is a main thoroughfare for many people in the morning and in the afternoons. And if that, if that person was taken on by us and we just had some, you know, retiree, you know, doing it, it would be severely problematic instantly, number one. Number two, you're absolutely right. Everything she said, it's just as bad a traffic nightmare over there and potentially very dangerous one. And I don't mean for the kids crossing. I just mean in general, there's going to be an accident there without a, a skilled crossing guard directing traffic. And, and the backups it would cause, would cause police headache if they didn't have somebody who knew what they were doing. And the, the kids that cross, they cross in a large group with multiple kids and multiple parents with them all together. And right back, the parents right back. So I'm not saying, I'm not saying they wouldn't be in danger if we didn't have it. But to me, I also, when I drive to work, I drive through Nashua on a main road. And there are indeed three crossing guards that I see every day when I go. But they are not directing traffic, not at all. They are literally waiting for kids to step into the crossway. They step out into the road to make sure people stop and then they go back. That's a crossing guard. We don't have crossing guards. We have police that direct traffic and they're necessary. And I don't think they're the school district's responsibility.
Lori?
So I was going to say all of the same things. And, you know, one of the things that the town of Merrimack does quite often is when they show the pie chart on how much the school district spends versus how much the town spends. Well, they're going to have to keep the traffic, traffic guards because it's part of their obligation. We have a great partnership with them. But what, there is no reason, we have no benefit to take that on.
Yeah, and I, I, Jenna said it exactly. It's not a crossing guard. It's traffic control. If it was a crossing guard, I could see your point. Because after we had that initial conversation about this, I, I was like, I'm going to go talk to all these different school districts. And I, on summer break, so I talked to one school district. And I talked to Bedford and I said, what do you do with your crossing guards? And they said, oh, they're, they're school district employees. We pay for them. But one of them just retired two years ago and they haven't filled it. And so now there's no crossing guard there. But my point is, is that they were paying for it. But again, when I asked what the position was, it was a crossing guard. It was stopping traffic momentarily for people to cross the street. And yeah, this is, this is traffic control. And I don't know any teacher that's willing to go take care of traffic control, which by the way, is literally right in front of the police station. So no, I, I'm in agreement with my fellow board members here on that.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we continue to ask the Merrimack Police Department to support and fund the traffic control guards.
All those in favor? Passes four, zero, zero. And then I just have one small other, because budget season will, oh, okay, sorry. Budget season will be here before we know it, everyone's favorite time of year. There was some conversation about potentially having a, another joint budget committee, school board meeting to kind of get everybody in the room to just go over the procedure for how our two committees work together. Ideally with some type of mediator, so that way somebody who kind of understands the RSAs and how these committees work. That's about as far as that conversation went. So I wanted to make sure I brought it to the board and had that discussion about, is this something we want to do? Do we see value in it? So that way we can go ahead with planning on that. So I'm just kind of putting that out there. Yeah.
So the only thing is, we, we did do that last year. And I think the sticking point last year was we gave the budget books to the budget committee before, at the same time. And then they thought that meant that it was their budget. So we have to keep the budget books until we're finished with the budget. Then the changes of the budget go to the budget committee. So if we have that meeting to go over RSAs and what it's going to look like and our vision and their vision, I think that's fine, but we just have to remember the budget book piece.
And I like that we're talking about it now because I think we fell victim to planning it a little bit on the late side last year. And that was part of the reason why the budget book thing happened and everything got pushed a little bit. So if we can like, if we're going to do this, setting a date sooner rather than later.
Yep.
And we can, we don't even have to pass out budget books at that meeting. Because I would like to communicate to them, like last year, we, we talked about like the goals that we set and, and everything. And I think that's valuable for them to hear as well. So they know kind of our vision for where the district is heading. And these are the things that we're looking for in terms of budget and.
Yep. Yeah, it would definitely be sooner rather than later, just to, just to get a jump on it before budget season does hit us. So it sounds like that's something we're interested in. So we'll start looking at dates, putting that together. Go ahead, Lori.
So my one other is, I was wondering if the board would entertain. Jim Bailey does the, the parade for the last two years. But for many, many years, SAD did the mock accident at the high school. That didn't happen this year due to sensitivity of, of losing a student. But Jim Bailey puts his staff together to do all of that. And I was wondering maybe at the September meeting, we could recognize him and thank him for the, the service he does our community. He really, he graduated from Merrimack High School. I'm going to say he probably, I think seventy-four, maybe, I don't know. But, and his heart is in Merrimack and he's, he's just always willing to do whatever someone needs him to do. So if we could recognize him, I think that would be nice.
And as the mom of the president of SAD, I could not agree more. I, I keep hearing his name from my daughter and all the things that he does involving mock, mock crash. And I keep thinking, wow, this guy's, sounds incredible. So very impressive from what I've heard.
So would we be able to do like a plaque and recognize him and invite him to the meeting? And then Matt, there's one of the Merrimack employees that also, you know, volunteers to drive the, the truck. He's, he's a maintenance employee.
Oh, for the parade?
Yeah, so maybe he should come too. I mean, because he, you know, he's also goes and gets all the desks and the flags and, you know, all of that. So maybe two people. All right. Thank you.
That honks his horn over and over again.
Do we need to take a vote on that? No, we're just going to do a recognition. Okay.
Any other other?
Can, may I just, Lori, if you could send Sandy some specific information and that will help us customize the plaque or plaques.
All right, moving on to policies. We have quite a few. Approval of fund balance policy, DIA.
And once again, all of these policies have been reviewed by our legal counsel. Once again, I want to thank Sandy, I want to thank Naomi for, I think, the most aggressive policy action we've had in, in probably a number of years. And it's great to see them being updated or new policies being generated. And so I'll be glad to answer any questions. As you know, some of them have a lot of red ink on them. And that's because they have been redrafted by our legal counsel to comply with either federal or, or state statutes.
And if I understand this correctly, tonight we're adopting fund balances, DIA and wellness policy?
That's correct.
That is correct. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the fund balance policy as written.
I'll second. All those in favor? Four, zero, zero.
Do you need a motion for the wellness policy?
Yes.
I will make a motion that we approve the wellness policy as written.
I have a couple suggestions maybe on the wellness policy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion?
Discussion. So when we look at the wellness policy, some of the things like in the, I was thinking in the first paragraph where it says, supports the development of lifelong wellness practices such as, we talk about eating and physical activities. And then when we go below, we talk about mental and social and emotional health. I didn't know if we could put, you know, I think it's so important, mental, social and emotional wellbeing. You know, because you just say such as, and we talk about physical, such as we talk about, you know, eating, exercise, but the mental and emotional has really been a focus of ours. So if we could just put that right in the front part of the paragraph. That, that was my main point, just because we, we've been focusing so much. And then on the, on page five of seven, again, when it goes to mental wellness, when it says in the second sentence, the district recognizes that social and emotional. I thought we should put mental in there too. Because again, the district recognizes that mental, social and emotional wellbeing. Because we call it mental, but then we don't put mental. Just a little picky.
I thought that, yeah.
Okay.
So I guess a motion with the changes.
Yeah, any other?
As amended, yeah.
Yeah. So I will, I will amend my motion to say that I will make a motion that we accept the wellness policy, JLCF, as amended with the suggestions that Lori just had.
Second?
I will, I will resecond.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero, zero. All right, and we have the second review of student transportation services policy, EEA.
I'm sorry. You know, I should have learned that by now.
You're on, it's summer vacation.
At this point in time, at this point in time, we have had no public comment, nor input about the student transportation services. This does not require a vote tonight. If you have any other questions on, on this policy, we'll, like the following two, we will be glad to answer them.
Questions? And then you want, you want to just open it up to the others since we're on them already? Admission for homeless students, JFABD or?
Generally, for C and D, first reading for the admission of homeless students and E, first reading for education of children in foster care. You would generally make a motion to waive the first reading of that policy.
Gotcha.
Of those two policies, excuse me.
So do we have a motion? Oh, I'll make a motion to waive the first reading for policy JFABD and JFABE.
Second.
All those in favor? This is four, zero, zero. I have a question. Where do these letters come from? Is there a system for these letters? There is. Okay. That's interesting.
I, I actually know something about that.
Yeah.
You're curious. I don't know, I don't know if the letters themselves have any meaning, but we fixed it on our website to where the first letter indicates a section. So like they're grouped now by topic. So like, are, are the, the school boards, ones pertaining to the running of the school board are all in one subheading that has a letter in front of it? Ones that are pertaining to like student discipline or whatever have the same letter in front of it? And there's a whole bunch of different categories. So that's, it's, it's an easy way to sort them, basically.
I figured there was a way. I didn't assume it was random, but go ahead, Lori.
So I did want to talk a little bit about admissions to homeless students and, you know, the barriers. But I know that the, the law is very clear on, you know, having no barriers. But given like recent where a twenty-nine-year-old enrolled in school, she was a social worker who went into a school just, I don't know, to write a book or something. But they enrolled her because of, you know, these, you know, no barriers. And now we have somebody in a school that now the parents are saying of this, you know, older adult that she had mental health issues. So I just didn't know if there's some safety. I, I know that, you know, if there's any concerns about it. I know the law is very clear, you know, break down barriers, let students in. But also if we could just, and it sort of says it, but you know, I just like a real safety.
If, we sometimes will have a conversation. In fact, I just had a conversation with Jody Hanley, a homeless liaison today about a particular student. I just wanted to know kind of the who, what, when, where and why. So that does take place.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on policies? Cool. All right, moving on to the approval of, yes.
Ken, did you, I apologize if I missed it. Was the vote to waive the reading for both D and E or just D?
Yeah, I, I think I said D and E. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, approval of minutes for June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, public meeting.
I'd be happy to make motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
Second by Lori. All those in favor? Aye, four, zero, zero. And then the acceptance of minutes for the June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, non-public meeting.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the non-public meeting on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second?
Second from Naomi. All those in favor? Four, zero, zero. All right, this is exciting. Acceptance of gifts and grants under five thousand dollars. I'm quick.
Tonight we have to Merrimack High School from Janine Marie Briggs, a gift of eight hundred dollars. Janine's yoga class, this is in memory of Xander. Pardon me about the, the last name. I, I'm just.
Ben Adam?
Ben Adam. I do not want to mispronounce that, so I figured I'd ask for some help here. Xander's family and, and Janine would like this donated to the Phil Carl's Wood Tech Program. There's a student activity account that, that has, you know, technology. So it's going to go right in there. So we've already spoken about that. So thank you very much, Ms. Briggs.
That's very kind.
Yeah.
And do we take a vote on that or we just accept?
Take a vote to accept.
We take a vote to accept, okay. Do we have a motion to accept this very generous gift from Jean Marie Briggs?
I'd be happy to make a motion that we accept this gift on behalf and to honor Xander.
Second.
Second from Naomi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, zero, and we thank you very much for this very kind and generous gift.
All right.
There are two resignations in your packet tonight for you to consider. Ford Sidon, Director of Student Wellness, and Diane Darius, a special education teacher at Merrimack Middle School.
We have a, a motion to accept.
I make a motion that we accept with sadness these resignations.
Can I second it?
Second. All those in favor? Four, zero, zero.
And now we have some nominations for you to consider. First, I'll start with the teacher nominations. Jennifer Rosido will become the special education coordinator.
Jennifer Rosito will become the Special Education Coordinator at Merrimack Middle School. Catherine Lambert, Speech and Language Pathologist at Reed's Ferry School. And Cynthia Bibb will be a part-time school nurse at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School.
I make a motion that we, we accept the nominations.
She has to read the administrator nominations first, or do we do them together? I think I do.
I think it's a teacher and then administrator.
I'll make second.
Uh, all those in favor? Four zero zero.
And then we'll do the administrators. Sarah Parotto, who you met with earlier today, will become our new Director of Student Wellness. And Kathleen McCall Ortega will become the Assistant Principal at James Mastercola Elementary School.
I'll make a motion that we accept the administrator nominations.
Second?
Second, um, all those in favor? Four zero zero, um, and we, we did get a chance to meet both of them, very impressive. I, I think they're gonna do really great things for Merrimack.
And then the last thing in the consent agenda is your approval of some job descriptions that have come forward. At the previous meeting, you were given drafts of five job descriptions. I just want to note that the Athletic Director job description has been pulled for now. There was some um feedback that needed to be incorporated into that job description. But the Director of um, Human Resources, Melissa Fazlick, has worked on the District Registrar job description, Director of S, School Counseling, job description, Middle School Dean of Students, and the Reading Intervention job description.
So I just, I want to accept them all, but the Director of Student Couns, Counseling, I did um, want to add one piece, if that was okay, to um, when it says oversee all the functions, um, I wanted to add in work with the Athletic Director to train and oversee all NCAA compliances. It's really important that if you have a student athlete who is planning to play Division One, Two, or Three, that those compliances are met. And um, that should come really from the Director of Guidance and then they work with the Athletic Director. And, and it's just not spelt out here, I'm sure it's, it's in there in, under other, but I think it should be spelt out.
So I think we could do that two ways. I think you could accept it with that revision, or we can pull that and revise it and bring it at the August meeting.
I think you can accept it with the provision.
We have to make a motion?
Yes, so I, I make a motion, we accept it, all of them. Adding though, the Director of School Counseling, the NHI, the NCAA compliance piece to be put it in there as part of their job description.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Four zero zero.
And Lori, if you want to send me exactly what you're hoping for, or pass it along to Melissa either way. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okey doke, uh, moving on to other, starting with committee reports, do we have any?
So I was able to go to the Parks and Recreation Meeting, it was very exciting. They, they talked a lot about the parade and um, they talked a lot about summer camp and uh, you know, and also the program they're gonna be doing next year with Thornton's Ferry students, um, being able to go to the after-school program. But it was a real, it was fun seeing all the people that, when I used to be on the committee. So tha, thank you for letting me have a, a night.
Any other committee reports? Uh, correspondence?
I had one, I had a parent um, reach out to me in regards to energy drinks in the vending machine at the high school and had some questions around that. I contacted the Director of Food Services to just get a little bit more information and I'm waiting to hear back.
Any other correspondence? Uh, comments from the board?
I just have one, um, Mr. Olson, you had said you're meeting with Mackenzie Murphy. Is part of your discussion with Mackenzie, and I, I assume that's in her role as Nashua Community College, um, you're both meeting with her. Is that, does, is, is part of that to discuss expanding our dual enrollment opportunities or opportunities in which our students could be, could learn of more dual enrollment opportunities? Is that the primary piece of it, or is that just a, a piece of it?
All of the above.
Okay, yeah, because I'm really excited about all what we're doing with the, the graduation pathways and making, making it um possible for, for maybe the, the kids that find traditional school challenging, um, to have pathways to graduation that make it easy for them. But I also want to make sure on the other end of the spectrum that the kids who, school's their jam and they just love it and they're trucking to college, that we are able to provide um, dual enroll, a broader scope of dual enrollment opportunities for those students. Because in talking to a student that, you know, is younger than my son, this student in, from another state, is going to graduate with a master's degree the same year my son's gonna graduate with his bachelor's degree because she went to college with so many dual enrollment. And AP classes are great and it's great to have those offerings, but dual enrollment is a whole different kind of experience. And I'm really excited that you all are meeting with her and this hopefully will be the first step to expanding those opportunities at Merrimack High School. Cause Nashua Community College, and if you look at their website, is an absolute treasure trove of opportunity that we are not tapped into adequately.
Yes, we, we, we had a wonderful meeting uh, at the college, uh, back when, was it six, five, six months ago? Mackenzie invited us and we were very eager to see what they had to say. There were presentations by several individuals there and we came away very impressed. And, and, and we want to expand as many opportunities for our students as we possibly can.
Just a little bit on that, so, and SNU does a lot with dual enrollment. The downside is uh, I have a nephew that graduated from Euclid High School in Ohio and went to University of Cincinnati. And they didn't take any of his dual enrollment classes. So um, parents have to know, some colleges are going to accept, but if you choose especially a college outside of New Hampshire, they might not accept those classes. I mean, they're great classes, but they might not accept them, you know, unless you went to a college that is going to accept it. So there's no guarantee to that. So that was just the downside for him. He took all those dual enrollment classes and zero got accepted at the University of Cincinnati.
That, that's very important for our students to know, we'll discuss that with Mackenzie.
It's just not, not automatic.
Yeah, it's important to do your due diligence if you're looking at a university to make sure.
And that's where our guidance department comes in again, you know, helping to educate parents and students on all of that. But presenting the opportunity, should it, you know, benefit? Because, you know, my son went out of state and did a dual enrollment class at Nashua Community College and absolutely transferred, no problem. So.
Just want to add that um, when Bill and I meet with Mackenzie, we've talked about including both Harley Hall and Kay Colbert in those conversations so that they have that firsthand knowledge. And Kay was excited to attend the breakfast the next time um, they invite us. And I think just having the connection with Mackenzie is, we're so lucky, you know, because she's so invested, graduated from Merrimack High School and really understands, I think, um, the students that go through there. She's not that far removed from the high school and, um, but ensuring that wherever, you know, those dual enrollment credits, will they transfer? You know, that is, that's tough because I'm wondering if, you know, there were other schools that your nephew could have chosen that the dual enrollment credits did, did transfer.
That was my sister's whole point, because if he went to OU, I think they would have accepted him, but he went to Cincinnati and didn't accept him. So we, parents find out after.
He's extraordinarily passionate about the Merrimack School District and uh, we're very much looking forward to working with her.
All right. Now gonna open it up to public comments on agenda items. So if you'd wish, if you wish to speak on any of the agenda items heard tonight, feel free to step to the mic and we'd be happy to hear from you. Yeah, right there, just to get the little button.
Hi, my name is Cindy Poirier. I am, live at Five Hickory Lane in Merrimack, I've been here forever. But I am currently in the role of um, President of the Mesa, Merrimack Support System um, Union. And we just want to thank you so much for opening up this um, the MOA for us, or for giving us that little retention bonus and something just to say thank you, you know? And we work hard every day in so many different categories. And just that little boost twice a year really helps. And I think with the other money of sign-on bonuses and things like that, is a great way to entice people to come. So I just wanted to say thank you. It just means a lot to me, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You and everyone you represent.
Yeah, I don't know if there are any, one of the hardest working groups of people in our buildings, for sure, without a doubt.
We have like thirteen categories too, you know, from parents to custodians to food service, so.
Yep, we, nothing happens in our schools without your community, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Any, uh, yo, by all means.
Nope, there we go, you can hear, thank you, Justin, absolutely amazing, I love him. NCC programs, uh, I want it for all the students watching, and I know there are hundreds. The Governor's Scholarship, who hopefully will be a little beefed up this year. You can get two free STEM classes uh, at NCC for your dual enrollment. I think it's a really great program and one that the guidance department never really talks about. I mean, that's quite unfortunate. Uh, in fact, I hear very little from my guidance department, um, and I met with my guidance counselor, I would say more than the average student did. So I don't know whether it's a communication issue um, between the administration and guidance or between guidance and students. Certainly something I think that's important to be addressed. And then, of course, I came in and I heard the words open campus, which just make my ears tingle and I love that so much. And I do want to just clarify a little bit, um, is when we talk about these types of things at a school board meeting, it's not necessarily um, to have you guys go and, and set the policy and set the agenda. So that when we open up in September, you guys have done all the work, we have an open campus. But I know as much as Steve Clair would love to listen to my policy proposals every day, um, he does have a high school to run. So it's important that um, we're doing as much work outside of that, gauging opinions from people who have to approve the policy, from of course, our other administration like Mr. Olson, um, and our two wonderful uh, super, Vice Superintendents um, here. Before we go and we sit down with Mr. Clair, um, who I believe has already had a meeting about this, um, and gotten the ball rolling. He's just, a lot of things to take care of over the summer. And so it's important to get as much of that work done before we go to him and say, we would like you to bring this to the board. How do you feel about it? What can we do, right? So those types of things are really important to get out of the way beforehand. And it's wonderful that we have these types of meetings, um, where we get a chance to sit down with not only the people who are approving policy, but the people who are implementing the policy every day, right? So I'll say thank you um, for giving me this opportunity, right? Of course, to every member of the public, incredibly useful. And I'll let anybody else who would like to make a public comment go.
Seeing no additional public comment, um, do we have a motion to adjourn? Yeah.
I would be happy to make a motion to adjourn. Second?
All those in favor? Four zero zero, have a good night, everybody, we'll see you in August.